Okay. We did want to read our little blurb just before we get started tonight. So as we get started tonight, we'd like to inform everyone of some of the decorum changes we're trying to implement to ensure our meetings run smoothly, professionally, and show respect for everyone. So for anyone here tonight that would like to make a comment, there will be a public comment period at the start of the meeting. Please come to the podium during the meeting. It's important, especially tonight, as we are televised and we don't want to pick up everything. And then during that time, if you have to make a statement. So also note that the public comments are limited to three minutes per person. To maintain decorum during the meetings, please do not speak from the audience. If you have questions or comments that arise during the course of the meeting, please see our town manager, Aretha Adams, with any of those, and she'll be glad to get them addressed for you as well. For those presenting this evening when your item arises, please come up to the podium and state your name and affiliation prior to beginning. We certainly do appreciate your cooperation and hope you enjoy this wonderful meeting tonight. All right, so announcements, I guess we're going to do those first, correct? All right, our announcements. Our farmer's market is going to be beginning on May 20th. So I guess that's what, next Sunday?
Yeah.
So that's awesome, right? 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Everybody's been jonesing for the farmer's market to come back, so please show up Sunday. It's going to be a fun time. Town offices will be closed on May 28th for Memorial Day. And then the June 2018 meeting will be held on June 25th, 2018. We had to switch that due to the Maryland Municipal League Conference that was going on. So with that out of the way, are there any public comments this evening?
Hello, my name is Kathy Fuller, and I'm running for commissioner. I just wanted to say hello and thank you for inviting me to come this evening and to briefly speak to you. I'm running for commissioner at this district, and as you may know, that I have worked in the commissioner's office at some point, and as a policy analyst and a commissioner's assistant, so I'm familiar with how the commissioners and the municipalities interact. And I am interested in knowing what in the county you see the county can help you with, that maybe it's not quite there yet, what I can do to help with that. And I am interested in looking at Sykesville and the commissioner's office as a real partnership. I know that you guys have your own elected authority, your own town charter, your own goals, and your own kind of plans for the town, and I am interested in supporting that. And so please reach out to me if you have any questions about where I stand on any issues. I'd be happy to talk with you. And anyway, you can also look me up on kathyfuller.org if you want to get more information about me personally, but I would like to just kind of say, please reach out to me, and I would like to know where you stand on issues, what's important to you. I know Warfield is a big issue. I know that the roads in the area are issues, water is an issue, and I would like to hear where your goals and things are for that. So, thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. Thanks for running and thanks for coming and introducing yourself to everybody. We need lots of stuff for Sykesville from Westminster. So that's what our main goal is, is to get lots of stuff for Sykesville and South Carroll. So if you win, that's what our expectations are.
Right.
Just putting it out there too, tonight since we're on TV, so all the other candidates will know what's required down here. So thank you, Kathy, for coming up. Is there anybody else that, any more comments this evening? Okay, well with that out of the way, we're going to get moving. Treasurer's report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ellen Sweet, town treasurer.
Good evening.
And we have the treasurer's report for the month of March. I've projected out the rest of the year also, and have a list of budget amendments ready for our next meeting. I'm just holding off to see if we have any other things coming up. We're pretty much on target with our budget for the year, so just a few small adjustments will be coming. Does anyone have any questions about March?
Questions for Evelyn. That's a good sign. Good job.
Thank you.
I didn't really have a question, but I don't know, I didn't get any email back from everybody if they liked it in the Excel format or did they like it in the PDF format? I'm not sure. I personally would like the Excel format for the budget report. I don't know what anybody else was thinking.
I like the PDF.
Well, when I send Carrie the PDF to go with all the documents, I'll send you out the Excel format at that time. I'll send it to everybody.
Thanks. I just mean to make more work, but it's just easier for me.
No, that's no problem.
The checkbook is sideways when it's scanned, so it's a little difficult to read.
Okay.
When it's PDF, but when it's Excel, it's readable.
Okay.
Control Shift minus minus.
Well, thanks, thank you, Evelyn.
I'll scan it so it comes out readable next time. Thank you.
Thanks for that Microsoft tip, too. All right. All right, public safety report. Chief, you're up.
Evening, everyone. Mike Spalding, chief of police.
Good evening.
We're going to be talking about the public safety report covering the period April 16th through May 6th. Again, a lot of events here. I'm not going to go through each one individually, I'll just kind of highlight some of the more important events. We had 15 assist other agencies during that period, 10 community policing events, 23 incident reports, which are reflected in pages two and three of your packet, 260 patrol checks, and 79 traffic enforcement initiatives, for a total of 536 events during that period. Entertain any questions you may have about any of the incidents. You're not allowed to mention Groundhog at this meeting tonight, so refuse to answer any questions about that.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Let me off easy.
I don't have any questions.
Let the air out of the balloon, huh?
Well, since we're on the TV, look, it's not Sykesville Police that care at the Groundhog.
I would say which agency.
Right, so thanks for fielding all the stuff.
It was a rough week.
Even though we had to, which, yep.
It literally lasted all week long. We're just inundated with a lot of very angry people. Yeah, so. I would like to point out that I believe some of you are attending the Chamber of Commerce their annual awards this Thursday morning. We're actually going to have several people that are going to be receive awards, receive recognition. Our auxiliary lieutenant, Kevin Cox, has actually been selected as the volunteer of the year for the county. So unfortunately, he won't be able to be with us since he's currently deployed through his regular job with the Air Force, but I believe his wife and his mother are going to be there to accept the award on his behalf, so very proud of him for that. Officer Eric Almenas, as you know, our new officer, is actually receiving an award, a lifesaving award, but it was for something that occurred while he was still with his prior department, so he'll still be recognized there. And of course, PFC Jason Kirchner, our perennial officer of the year, is going to receive an award as well, so looking forward to that and appreciate those of you who are going to attend to be there with us. It'll be a good day for our town.
Great job. Please thank everybody.
Sure will.
As well, yeah, appreciate that.
Absolutely. Anything else for me?
Make sure you tell Barbara we appreciate her being the shield for the police department this week.
Yeah, she took the brunt of the calls, and she was keeping a tally of some of the further calls. I think you may, did you tell them in your?
I did.
We can add to that list. Italy, I got an email from somebody in Italy, believe it or not, that that story went that far. So it's just amazing, the power of social media.
Well, I grew up outside of Punxsutawney, Pennsylvania, so I'm pretty ticked off.
Right.
But anyway.
I understand.
Okay, anything else for you, chief? All right, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, we did need to make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, so.
Motion to approve the March treasurer's report.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, all right, thank you. Treasurer's report is approved. Council committee reports have already been put out.
Yeah, just touching on the council committee reports, I wanted to pass these out from the downtown Sykesville connection. That'll be the visitor's guide that'll be at the post office and stores for people to pick up. Copy for everybody. This is the introduction letter from the mayor.
Pretty cool stuff.
They did a good job on that.
Check it out. Get your copy at the visitor's center, and it looks like a pretty nice job.
Really is. Chock full of information, and it's not overwhelming. It's presented really well.
It's pretty good. Very nice. Yep, awesome. Thank you. Okay. Okay, consent agenda. So just a minute is on there from the town council meeting from April 23rd. Everybody's okay with that. We can make a motion to approve the consent.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so the consent agenda is approved. On to our open session items. Our first item of business this evening is 2018-27, and this is discussion of the petition for the Buttercup Road annexation. So I guess we may have some PowerPoint for that as well, and then you guys want to come on up?
Yes, we'll make a brief presentation. Jay Brooks, Lady Delaney, Lady Curtison Beach, represent the contract purchaser Buttercup Development LLC. And with me is Rob Scranton and Frank Podapin. They are the principals of Buttercup Development, and Marty Hackett from Caroline Services. And so we're here to answer any questions once we make a very brief presentation. I have, Aretha, is there another drawing other than that one? Because I.
There is. There are a few.
Okay, that shows that property we are requesting to be annexed. And then I have.
I think that's it, Ross.
Okay, well, I might do it the old-fashioned way. I don't kill myself.
Be careful.
Yeah. Here are, there's a zoning map in here, which I think is helpful to kind of orient people a little bit, and that's why I was wanting to hand this out. Give one for everybody.
Oh, thank you.
Nah, nah, I won't. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think if you get oriented, if you look at the second document I handed to you, I just think it might be helpful. It shows, the X is the property that we're asking to be annexed in. This is a zoning map. You can see the large green space below that. That's the very large park that's in existence there. And towards the town, immediately adjoining the town, is the Raincliff Development, which we're adjacent to. And then, of course, in point of fact, Mr. Scranton, Mr. Podapin developed that particular project as well. And then that brings us to this picture here, which is just a concept plan of how they would develop the property. And one point I'd like to make is that this property has been zoned industrial and has been sitting there for quite some time. It's got a lot of challenges. It's got a large environmental area, it's got topography, it's got a lot of wooded area, and so the part that they're actually developing is considerably less than half of the 9.7 acres. And the property, I think, has sat there for a long time, and I think Mr. Boyle, who has represented the owner for many years, can confirm that, that their efforts to sell commercial industrial just, you know, have not proved to be fruitful. So what we're asking for is to have this property annexed into the town, and we are also asking that it be rezoned R-7500, so that this type of development can then proceed. And this development works with the existing Raincliff Development. It gives access trails to the park below, and we just think it would be, you know, a good development. And as you probably know, when the annexation moves forward, Carroll County will need to do a waiver to allow for the R-7500 zoning. Right now, it's zoned industrial. And this is in the town's growth area, and we would certainly ask you to support that, and we would hope that Carroll County would issue the waiver, since it is in your growth area. And I think, I'm thinking and hoping there'd be deferential to the town's decisions on that point. So that basically is our little presentation. We're happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
The applicant has submitted a petition that's in your packet. It has been verified. It's 100% of the ownership. So tonight, after your discussion, you'll be voting to accept that petition, and at the next meeting, legally, we're required to bring forth a resolution, so that the public can speak on it.
Okay, so Brooks, how many units are there?
I believe there are 45.
Forty-five units?
Mm-hmm.
How many units have we found?
And then where is the BGE piece in this? Can you point that out to where, like, where they're going to get access?
Sure, Rob could probably do it. I think you need to push the map down a little bit. It's at the top, and you can't quite see it.
Pardon me. It's up in this corner here.
So what, and then how are they going to get access, Rob?
They have an easement along this property boundary to their fee simply to land in the back.
Okay.
So is that going to remain BGE property, or is that part of the annexation?
No, that's not part of the annexation.
Okay.
So just to make everybody clear, that was where the proposed substation was. Now, at this point, I think they put that on hold because they're not saying they don't need the additional power at this time, but I just wanted people to be aware of, it's a placeholder in there, so I don't know. Does anybody know what the future of that?
I could just at least talk a little bit about it. The, you know, it was, I guess it's probably been about four or five years ago when it was sold to BGE. So yes, originally, they were supposed to go forward with the project. They've held off. The other thing we talked about is trying to get the easement beside the building there, but it didn't really work out too well, so that's why the easement's on the lower portion right now. So I think now it is on hold with, you know, but no, you know, as they stated, it's no part of the annexation at all.
So protocol is to have the town approve the annexation and approve the?
R-7500 zoning request.
And then after that, it goes to the county?
Well, the county has an opportunity. The county is required to sign a waiver to allow the zoning to go forward. If the county refused to sign the waiver, then the property would be zoned IR for five years until it could be rezoned back to R-7500.
Because it was industrial use previously, is there NDE that's involved to make sure that the property is acceptable for residential use?
It was zoned industrial. The part we're having's never been used as industrial. It's undeveloped. So there's not, it's not like there was, you know, there's sins under there or anything like that.
Okay.
Not follow, just on, going, you know, sort of piggybacking what he had talked about earlier, is the fact that, you know, a number of years ago, I represent the Humphreys family. Obviously, Walt had passed away last year, but prior to that, you know, probably dating back six or seven years ago, Walt had, you know, a pretty extensive conversation with a number of engineers and had some, you know, initial site plans drawn up, but it just didn't work for a commercial aspect because of the topography, just the layout of the whole thing. So he looked, you know, really explored all options, and at the end, it was, you know, it was shown to him that the best use was potentially a townhouse development, and sort of step up, and this was even prior to Rob developing the front one. So now I think it really ties both in, brings it all the way up to the park. So you'll still be left with two acres of industrial. That's the existing building there, and that, you know, it's going to be shielded there with the tree line and whatnot to keep. So you'll have still a two-acre industrial parcel there.
And that's not part of the annexation again. The annexation is the 9.7 acres, which is.
Right. Yep. Below, yeah, move that back up. And then I guess my next question is stormwater. So we had some issues with the Raincliff stormwater management side. I didn't know what the, what's the plan for stormwater on this site? Do you know?
It'll be addressed as part of the site plan process. What happened, I don't know if you heard the results, but basically, when they put the lights in, they tunneled through.
Yeah, I remember, I heard about that one, right?
And it collapsed the underground structure. So all adds back and working, you know, put it all back in place, so that's all been working now. That's kind of the new way. That particular structure's not, no longer approved for.
Right, the old storm, that's what I was saying.
That particular brand.
Yeah.
Again, the failure was due to a contractor running a mole through it and collapsed the, basically, egg crates. You know, the plastic egg crates is what it looked like. So this will have, this will be, storm management will be addressed as part of the site plan process. Marty can probably speak more to that if you have any questions about the actual review, but it'll be provided on-site under appropriate protocols by the county when they get to reviewing it at that point.
All right, so you're not anticipating, you've kind of got the preliminaries worked out on that, I guess?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And then I guess connectivity through Raincliff. So improvements, I guess, are my questions, like onsite, are you guys going to be amenable to some of the improvements necessary to get this thing all hooked up with everything? With Raincliff and then up to Freedom Park and all those kinds of things?
Yeah, so the sidewalk right now, if you're familiar with Raincliff Road, ends right here.
Right.
Along Raincliff Road. So the project, our vision would be that sidewalk would continue to the intersection of Buttercup and Raincliff, which then is the entrance to the park. We had, Ian, you were with us before, we had preliminary discussions with the Raincliff HOA president, I believe he was at the time, a couple months ago, about their trails were trails to nowhere from 10 years ago, and we've talked about perhaps connecting some connectivity into this project to give another nice access to the park ultimately. We'll do another gazebo top lot like we have over in Raincliff. We'll be part of this project as well.
Okay, so I mean, you guys are open to that, because I think there's going to be some discussion with the planning commission on that.
We have to.
Part of it. Okay. Hold on, we'll get your comments next. So hold that, and then council, what other questions?
Just a quick question. I'm not familiar with the use, the current use of the industrial building off the north side of that property that we're speaking of annexing, yes?
It's a contractor's office. They did, they were a contractor for drywall and acoustical ceilings, commercial, mostly commercial.
And it's still, that's still the current tenant? Like, that's?
Yeah, I think they subleased to someone else as well.
They, right now, they have about a third of the building is leased to another contractor. He's a demolition contractor, and then they're, you know, with Walt passing away last year, their business really, you know, Walt was the cornerstone of that business, so the sun, you know, was a little overwhelming for the sun, so they actually slowed down, and they're, I believe they're going to shut that business down and downsize. So right now, they're not currently, you know, in the building itself. It's still housing all their equipment in there, but I think they're trying to figure out what's going on. It was sort of a shock that, you know, that really, really hurt the whole situation with him passing.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? Okay. Yes, sir? Do you want to come up?
You mentioned that WBGNE might want to put a substation there. Do we have any idea how close we are to oversubscription on the local power grid, because adding new units may necessitate them putting a substation?
I don't really know. I know they bought it for a substation, they own it for a substation, so anytime they want to use it for a substation, they can put it there. But I think we just heard that they have kind of put that on hold. I don't think they think they need it.
I don't think they anticipate the need as much as great as they did with energy efficiency, LED, some of the, yeah, a lot of the reductions in energy efficiency have reduced the need. However, I would, while we're on TV now, if you buy one of these units, I would go into it knowing that there may be a BGE substation there someday, because I will be definitely held accountable at some point saying, "You knew that was coming, and you let them build there anyway."
Well, it can be developed.
Right? We knew it was there, and then we let you guys build these anyway.
Well, that parcel is located substantially far away from.
There's a significant.
Yes, yes, no, it is a good buffer, right.
Compared to the Raincliff.
Raincliff. Well, that was my next question, I guess, too, is have we, and so this goes to procedural, as far as notifying the Raincliff HOA about this. I know you've talked to maybe Dick Anisport or the other guy, maybe about the current president about this a little bit, but.
I've talked to Dick as well.
Yeah.
They are aware that this is potentially happening, so.
So I mean.
And his biggest concern is the connectivity.
Right, so the procedure is what I'm getting at as far as notifying and the process. So what's the next step tonight? If the council's okay with this, then how will we make sure the community gets on board and gets a chance to talk to?
We are required legally to post it, I think, three times within a certain period of time. It will be at the next meeting. We have to do a resolution. Whether you all are in favor of it or not, legally, once the petition has been verified as valid, we have to do the resolution to give the public an opportunity to comment.
Okay.
So that's our next step.
All right, great.
And I guess, Aretha, the next step will be a public hearing. In other words, the next hearing will be, quote, "a public hearing," and then any members of the community, you know, can come in and certainly.
Okay. So that being said, is there action that we need to take? That is my question.
If you would just take action to approve or reject the petition, my recommendation is to approve it. It's been verified, it is valid.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to approve this petition?
Make a motion to approve the petition for the Buttercup annex.
Annexation.
Annexation.
There you go. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming up. Good luck with everything. Hopefully it'll work out. All right. Yep, that's a big, big part of our piece here. Okay, so all right, our next item of business is 2018-28, and this is discussion of the action of the street closure for the August 1st Friday food truck event. And it's Monday, and this is just one, okay? One Friday, or is this?
Yeah, just the August 3rd.
Yep, sure.
So I could give a little background. Do you want to?
No, you go.
So I think it was November 28th, we gave the merchants permission to do this. There were three first Fridays, June, July, and August. This was a, gave them permission to bring in food trucks. There was no street closures at that time, and since then, it's been discovered that actually, it would, because the sidewalks were so narrow in Sykesville, that would be better to close a small part of the town and have the food trucks set up there. There is some food trucks, various locations in the parking lots, and Mary Vaccaro was supposed to be here, but she had a little family emergency, so Jane, thank you so much for coming, and do you want to add anything to?
I think just basically did, I think they're just asking for the August 1st Friday is to have the street closed from Oklahoma to Baldwin Station, just food trucks.
Chief, chief, any input? No, good.
I don't foresee it being an issue.
I guess so. So you've had a chance to look at it? I know some of the comments say there was maybe some issue with the parking spaces, but we're okay with everything?
Yeah, I think we're going to be fine there. We'll get with them offline to go through the event permitting process to work out any kinks that might come up, but I don't foresee any issues.
Okay. All right, then, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the?
Yeah, I got it. I'll make a motion to approve the road closure for Oklahoma Avenue from Main Street to Baldwin's Drive on August 3rd, 2018, for the first Friday event that night.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it's approved. All right, our next item then is the discussion of the 2018-29, and this is discussion of the action on the cider stroll and the required liquor license resolution, 2018-05. Okay, you're back!
Dave Lindy, Trisport Junction, representing merchants, first Fridays. Dave Lindy Trisport Junction, representing merchants, first Fridays, they, for us, were our merchants, the cocoa crawl went really, really well, so we thought we would have a cider haul, and we were, thought the last day of Farmers Market, that last day, Sunday in October would be a great day to do that, so we were hoping to get a liquor license so that they could do the strolling like they did with the mimosas on main.
Kind of thing, with the...
So...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, so I talked to Mary, and she was thinking that they weren't going to get a liquor license for this, or just give it a try and...
We were going to ask for it.
Okay. Alright.
Because that would be a good way to go, but if it's a problem, we can always just bring it into our stores, and just like we would do with any other thing, where if, you know, we could have, like, we used to have the mimosas on main where you had to confine them in your stores, so that they couldn't walk out in the street, and we can do it that way, too.
Yeah, because I...
So we're perfectly fine.
I think I talked to her, so I did have a phone conversation with her, I think it was like Tuesday or Wednesday, and she said because this was kind of a first event, that they were just going to have it locally in the store, they weren't going to go see what kind of crowd it gathers, like, she wasn't sure if it was going to be a more family, like a fall family thing, or...
She, I'm sorry.
Mary Vaccaro. So I...
I mean, we would be fine with that, I think it was just something we wanted to put on the table if it was possible, because obviously the public likes that, makes it really easy for them to walk around, enjoy the shops, and not have to focus on that, but certainly it's, you know, we have discussed this with other issues as merchants, where we know how to keep them confined into the stores and not let them walk out with alcohol in their hands, so we can do it that way, too.
Right. So how did we do...
And not always, they're not always going to be hard ciders, so some people will have, you know, just regular apple ciders, and it's just a fall fest thing, but I'm sorry.
Because it is basically like mimosas on main, so how did we do that, was that, was that the same, because that road wasn't closed or anything for that, right?
So no, there's no road closures for this?
No, right.
This was, this was...
So this is kind of the same thing, but could they leave with the alcohol then?
Well, with mimosas on main this year, we did, but in the past, we did not.
So do we have an alcohol, a license for that one, the mimosas on main, we did, right?
We did.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's what they're saying, trying to do the same thing as that, so we probably need the alcohol.
Right, and if we, I just, we learned from the mimosas on main where we, we had some issues with no alcohol behind that, behind this point, and that sort of thing, so it does, you know, require some more.
Right, so if you don't have the permit, then you have to be very careful.
Right.
Right, right, so I think it's better to have the, allowing it, right, to be served, because then you can have it outside of the store, is that correct?
Well, it makes it easier for merchants and customers, but, you know, it may not make it so easy for police, and, you know, so that's kind of...
But it sounds like there's some confusion between whether it's that they're actually going to do it or not, so...
Yeah, so I didn't think they were going to do it, I thought it was going to be like the cocoa crawl, where they just serve hot chocolate, and if anybody wants to have a little vodka in their chocolate, they would confine it to the store, so there would be no liquor license needed. I mean, we can postpone this till the next meeting, really, to get, so I don't know...
I thought we already was okay with going out, but it was on the, it was on the agenda for saying it with the liquor license, and that's why we figured we'd, we'd bring it up, but it'd be very okay to go out at this time.
It was the last one to change.
They needed it anymore.
I think Mary understood that we would not, this is why, it's so bad to talk about what I've been going down, I thought Mary, I talked to Mary, and she said that it would probably not be good, so it would be okay either or, but we wanted to ask you, because you won't, there is, I think, Ellen, I'm sorry, there is, it's always a fine line when you have people going to the store, and we, and, well, I'm a restaurant, so I'm not allowed to do that, to give alcohol, and to say, "Oh, no, you cannot give," and then they have to shut, you know, they want to go, and then they end up drinking more, it feels like.
Yeah.
To me, but it's, it's difficult to find the balance between having all of the, all of the, I mean, everybody serving alcohol inside their store, and say, "Oh, sorry, you cannot give," and to manage the fact that they cannot leave without...
So I guess my question is, if the consensus among the merchants who will be, you know, basically hosting this event, is that it makes more sense from a traffic control inside their stores, or whatever, inside their place of business, then that's, I guess, what we need to hear, so that we can make an informed decision, is that what you guys are saying?
So I think that if we have, if we are allowed to have a liquor license for this event, we will definitely need to have more volunteer than we had for the, for the mimosas, mimosas, we learned, and mimosas, I think it was a lot easier to have the liquor license for mimosas, it was the first year this year, but we need, we realized that we needed more volunteer to block the silence and no alcohol, you know, and...
And so that's something that you would...
That's something we would do.
I think we would prefer to have the street closed with...
Not the street closed.
Not the street closed, I'm sorry, to have the liquor license.
Sure, it's easier.
So let me, can we table this?
This is a fair...
Let me just table it. It sounds like maybe we'll wait, right, get all the details.
We have time.
Make sure you got the volunteers, right, we got the time, so I think, I think there'll be a consensus if you guys can...
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, I mean, I just...
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you.
I had some conversations with Mary, and...
Right, we appreciate you bringing it up, and then we'll definitely, I think, just need a little more details, and then we'll...
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Mr. Mary.
That's okay. Chief, did you want to put a comment on that?
I was just going to say...
Come on up to the podium there, Chief.
It would be nice if we would have the opportunity to talk about this at staff before we got to this point, so that we could hash all this out, and, you know...
That's a good idea, well then we'll table it, and then you can discuss it a little bit more internally as well, okay, that's a great idea, okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Alright, and now we're at 2018-30, and this is the public hearing on the town's entrance into the, I'm sorry?
Oh, I was just making funny racket, I shouldn't have said that.
30. Alright, into Leops, which is the law enforcement officer's pension system. Alright. So do you want to give some...
Sure.
Brief background on this, I guess we should?
Sure, currently, our police officers are in the state retirement system, Leops is a system that most of our surrounding communities in Carroll County and throughout the state are entering into, it's a much better system for the type of work that is law enforcement, the longevity of their career or lack thereof, it helps to compensate for disability injuries if they have to leave the workforce earlier, it helps to pay out more than they are currently able to get through the current retirement system we're in. With that comes, I guess, some setbacks from the town's perspective, from a financial perspective, it's going to cost about $239,000 to enter the program, we can pay that right out front in one lump sum, or we can pay it over the course of 20 years, and then there will also be about a $70,000 increase annually compared to what we're paying into the retirement system now. So there are some financial increases on our side, however, from a staff perspective, as the town manager, and just kind of knowing what the police department does, not just ours, but all police departments, this really is becoming a best practice, it's something that I would recommend that we go into with our eyes wide open, understanding that it will cause some, you know, financial strain throughout the years, but I think eventually it will even out, it will help with our retention, with our recruitment, to make sure that we can be as competitive as our neighbors.
Okay. Any additional questions on this topic? So again, on the procedure on this one, so what are we going to do tonight, if everybody's okay with doing the vote on this?
Well, we've opened a public hearing, so we just have to give the public an opportunity to speak on it, because you all wanted to have that, that opportunity, give the public that opportunity.
Right.
You'll close the public hearing, and then you'll vote on the resolution, this resolution is to enter Leops and to also join the company pickup program, which is just saying that we can take the funding from their paychecks for them to participate, it's very standard, it's something that we currently do with the current system, the state has drafted the resolution per their legal requirements in accordance to the town of Sykesville, and so everything seems to be in place, whatever your vote is tonight is a vote to either enter or not enter the system. And that will be the last step after that.
Are we going to hold more than one public hearing, or just...
Nope, just the one is, is what I recall you all wanting, if you want to hold another one, we absolutely can, but we were only going to hold this one, and it would take effect July 1 of this year. And Aretha, I think it's important to note to the public that we had a lot of discussion internally about this, this isn't something that we're just now learning, as you guys are, but there was something I remember that I think is worthy of note with respect to the lump sum versus spreading out across the 20 years, it would, I don't remember the increase in cost over that.
It would be...
It would be over $500,000 if we spread it and paid the inverse for 20 years.
Thank you for making that point.
And in my 11 years on the council, this is something I've talked about constantly, and just haven't had the financial means to do it, but I think we finally do now, but it's something we've always wanted to do, particularly for officer retention, because it's, everybody else has this except us, so...
And I think that's been one of the biggest things the chief's faced in the competitive environment out there with all the surrounding municipalities, especially with Mount Harry coming online with Leops, and, and, so I think important points have been made, I appreciate all your work on this, and then, you know, so, yeah, I think everybody's kind of clear, it is going to be a huge financial impact, but at the same time, we're hoping some, as Aretha mentioned, some of the other offsets, and then we're hoping that they'll be like, "Yeah, we're good now," for like a couple of years, police department doesn't need anything, that's never happened, by the way, just kidding, just trying, so...
No new police cars intended.
Right, 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 we're going to be driving the old 1972 town.
You have bicycles.
Right, right, alright.
Segways.
Alright, so other than that, I guess then, so do we want to open the public hearing then now, before we, so let's go ahead and do that, let's open the public hearing, alright, do we need a motion to do that? I'll make a motion, we open the public hearing, you start.
I'll second that.
Alright, so the public hearing is open, does anybody have any comments from the public on this, to share? Come on up to the podium, sir, going to try to get people working on that.
Mark, I'm a town resident, I know this is a lot of money, but I believe, I believe it's important we do this, these are the people who keep us safe, that's all there is, if we're having trouble recruiting, we need to solve that, so I support it.
Well, thank you. Any other comments?
Just so it doesn't look like only one person's supporting, but I echo what this gentleman said, I mean, it sounds like a no-brainer to me, Aretha pointed out, too, I mean, even if it's a big chunk of money upfront, the offsets I think are important, the retention, you know, it costs a lot more than that to lose and retrain police, and it's a public safety problem, so for one man's point of view, I'm for it.
Alright, well, thank you. Anybody else?
Aretha, were there any public comments by email to you, or...
There were none.
Okay.
That was a good case. Alright, well then, so we're going to close the public hearing, and then, so...
Vote on the resolution.
Public hearing is now closed, alright, and then we're going to take a vote on the resolution 2018...
So, yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the passed resolution 2018-02 of the mayor of town council of the town of Sykesville, Maryland, authorizing and transfer to the law enforcement officer's pension system.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions?
Do I have to correct that motion, because it says 02 here, and it's 03 on here?
It's 02 and 03, because we have to pass the pickup.
Yeah, because there's another part of this, right, is that the pickup piece of it, too, so we didn't even make a motion for that, too?
They were, they were all in one, you said it in spirit, we heard.
Okay, alright, good.
Thank you.
Alright, good, alright, well, congratulations, I know it's been hard fought, and I know you guys were counting on us, so we came through!
It's huge, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you guys for all you do, we really do appreciate it, and I hope, hope this sends a message that we really do appreciate it.
Loud and clear.
Alright. Okay, so our next item is the 2018-32, and this is the public hearing on ordinance number 302, the FY fiscal year 19 operating and capital budget, and the fiscal year 19 through '23 capital program, so I didn't know, did you want to have Evelyn come right up, or does anybody have any questions on this stuff? Yep, so this is basically everything we put together through the budget process.
Everything that's been presented to you and we've talked about, it has all of your changes listed in there, so if you have any questions, Evelyn will be happy to answer.
I have a question, but I have a comment, thank you to all that, all the effort that you put into the budget this year, it was a long effort, a big effort, and thank you.
And it's probably one of the smoothest processes we've had in a long time.
Yep.
Like I said, it was my fourth one, and it's never gone this well, so thank you.
Oh, thank you, it's my pleasure.
Yep, thanks, Aretha, for coming up with the blueprint to help us out with working with Evelyn, I think it was good, she was real angry with me getting started early, but I think it paid off in the end, so, so, thank you, Evelyn!
I'd like to apologize on TV, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, there you go.
She was never angry with me.
Well, she held it back in, I mean, she, she held it very well, she didn't, I never knew it until later, so it was all good. But thank you all for, because I agree, it was a much smoother process, the presentation was excellent, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
So, alright, so then we need a motion, I guess, to approve the hearing.
We have to do the public hearing.
Public hearing, okay, so let's open the public hearing on the budget and capital on that as well, so does anybody have any comments from the public on the budget and the capital? Okay, have a hearing done, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
We usually continue it until the next meeting.
Yep, okay, so we'll leave it open, thank you, Carrie, so we'll leave it open, we're going to continue it to the next meeting, and then we'll prove it then, and that way, if there's anything that comes up, you can bring it up, please just try to do that early, though, if you do have any comments.
When is the rate due to Carroll County?
That's coming up, so I think that's next here.
I thought that was in May, May 2nd.
Yes.
So...
Well, this one's on the next, I haven't...
Yep, we're going to have...
Is that going to, does that have to stay open?
Yeah, it has to, you have to keep it open.
Yeah, we're going to have to do both, right, exactly, so are we going to have enough time to get that into them?
We'll have to contact them with an extension and let them know what we expect the rate to be.
Okay. Right now, we're not anticipating any change in the rate, at least their rate, now that will result in an increase in taxes due to the constant yield, so that's the way we're going to have to advertise it, but the rate will be staying the same, so, just to make everybody aware of that, if you're coming to the public hearing, okay. Alright, well then, so are we going to talk about the rate then, or are we just going to, is that the next item, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and quickly, I guess, talk about that as a, as an add-on to this, so the 2018-33, and this is for the public hearing on the 2019 real and personal property tax rate, it is proposed to be the same as FY 2018, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on that, it will also remain open until the next meeting. And I think that's it, right, for the kind of opening session items?
I want to see if anybody's any comments, since it's open.
Sure.
Any comments on that tonight, thanks, Al.
I would like to make a comment about the Art and Wine Festival, and thank everybody for coming out and helping out, Councilman Link, Councilman President Betts, Mayor Shaw helped out, big help there.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Grassley.
Anna.
Yes?
Lake was in San Diego.
Carter.
Councilman Carter, I'm sorry.
Councilman, yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's an awesome event, so...
I appreciate everybody helping out, the weather wasn't perfect, but we had a good turnout, thanks to police for all their work, they were set up nice and early, blocking off the road, had to deal with a couple churchgoers a couple times coming down the road, but beyond that, everything went well, so, thank you.
We were coming down hot, too, the churchgoers, and they were on a mission, but it all worked out well, I know Leo got a little scared a couple times, but they were on a mission, so, at any rate, so I think Al's point was on the public hearing for the...
Tax rate.
Tax rate, is everybody okay with that, well, we're going to leave it open, so there's no comments.
I just wanted...
Okay, nope, I appreciate it. Any other council and manager comments, or...
I have a couple of comments.
Sure.
So on the art and wine, just wanted to give a huge shout out to the police and to the Public Works guys, who did an excellent job, and were, were out here all day, very nice, I got to meet a couple more of the Public Works guys that I hadn't quite met yet, I mean, just stand-up great guys, so kudos to them, and wanted to give a little shout out to our town clerk, we have a great town clerk here, last week was municipal clerks week, I did not recognize her last week, I made a joke every time she brought it up, and then she went out of town, and I recognized just how amazing she is. So everything that was, she deserves that. So, everything that was, she deserved that. So, everything that was wrong with your agenda this week was not Carrie's fault.
Got it.
So, uh, just take note of that, she does an excellent job, and in fact, today, um, she pulled together a very successful and well-attended, uh, benefits fair, the very first benefits fair we've had for our staff, um, we had all of our providers come out, we had 50% of our staff show up, um, so it was really great, and she's been doing a fantastic job, so thank you, Carrie. Um, the Sandusky Lot, we wanted to have that striped and ready to go before Sunday, um, but it doesn't look like that may happen due to weather. They were out here today, they were ready to go, and the clouds gathered, so, um, just stay tuned for that. We're hoping that it, it, it happens quickly, so, just wanted to say that. But Mark has worked very hard, truly have a great staff, so, since we're being televised, I just want to make sure that everybody's recognized, the town of Sykesville and their staff works very hard for the community.
Yep, hear, hear, we couldn't agree more. And we're gonna celebrate Treasurer's, uh, Week and, uh, the Municipal Clerk's Week now, together was our plan, right? So, so we know there's, uh, you know, we're gonna do something special, but, yeah, because, Carrie, we, we actually, we're gonna have it on Thursday, but then you weren't here, so we should...
Yeah, that's what it was!
You know, right, so, so we said, "We'll just have to do it with the Treasurer's Week." And Evelyn was on board with that, sharing her week with you, you know, so...
And then I want to make a comment, unfortunately, Sundays, or Saturdays, um, Movies in the Park was canceled due, due to the weather. It was a good call by everybody in the committee to make that call early, and make that announcement, and I do want to thank Aretha, Carrie, and Jenna. I sent them a text, sending, letting them know it was on a Saturday, so thank you for response, and also for the chief, letting him know that the auxiliary was not gonna be needed, so I appreciate you coming forth on your day off, I appreciate that, and we may need to reexamine our Mays, because I think in the past five years, we've only had one May movie. So, sing will be rescheduled for September, so let's sing it in September.
Sweet.
So thank you all for helping with the news blast and coordination.
You could almost plan rain on, when they have a movie, it's like, you know?
I was thinking if we ever have a drought, we advertise Movies in the Park, and we'll get it.
Exactly. And I did hear that Sparky, our new mascot, has arrived, so be on the lookout for him at our events this summer, and Nice Friendly Squirrel, that will be sponsoring our Spark events.
I saw him, Grandma.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
There you go.
Yeah, that's awesome. Okay. Don't mistake, it's a squirrel! There you go, all right. Um, any other comments? Okay, well, thank you all, thanks to everybody for all the good news, and, uh, I think that concludes our open session items, so...
It does not look like we're voting on anything imposed, is that correct?
No.
We're not.
Your minutes are not in here, so... We're not voting, we're just discussing.
Right, so was there anybody else that wanted to comment from the, because I think